Morning, ladies and gentlemen. I am David Vitale, President of the Chicago Board of Education. On behalf of my fellow members, I welcome you to today's Chicago Board of Education meeting. It is July 23rd, 2014, and we're holding this month's meeting here at the board chambers at 125 South Clark Street. Madam Secretary, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Thank you, Mr. President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The regular meeting of July 23rd, 2014, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Benin.
Here.
Dr. Heinz.
Here.
Vice President Reese.
Here.
Board members up.
Here.
Dr. Escoitia.
Present.
President Vitale.
Here.
Six members present. There is a quorum, and I would also like to recognize our Chief Executive Officer, Dr. Barbara Bird-Bennett, and our General Counsel, James Bebley. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Before we start the formal business of the meeting today, I just want to take a couple of minutes to recognize the work of Jim Sullivan. Jim, as many of you know, was the Inspector General for the Chicago Board of Education for the last 12 years, who made a decision to not stand for reappointment at the end of June. As you know, our organization, the Board of Education and the Chicago Public School System, is a large and complex, and in many ways, highly decentralized system that spends billions of taxpayer dollars every year. As such, unfortunately, it is subject to ethical abuse, fraud, and waste. And Jim and his office have done a remarkable job over the last dozen years on behalf of the citizens of Chicago in both uncovering waste and wrongdoing in our system. He's been a significant contributor to setting a high standard of ethical behavior and promoting the appropriate use of taxpayer dollars. Having worked personally with Jim in my two different roles here at the district over the last dozen years, I want to acknowledge Jim's professionalism and his commitment to serving the best interests of Chicago citizens and the children of Chicago. So I say to Jim, who unfortunately couldn't be with us here today, he's having stepped down before he starts the next stage of his life, he's taking some time off in Ireland, I guess that goes with Sullivan, okay. But I do want to say to him publicly, thank you for your service, Jim. You've shown us the best of what it means to be a public servant, and you have our best wishes for you and your family in your future endeavors. And the board will officially recognize Jim with a proclamation for his service with us, and we look forward to dealing with Nick Schuler, Jim's deputy, who the mayor has appointed as the interim Inspector General. And so we look forward to working with Nick and the ultimate permanent appointment of the Attorney General, Inspector General. With that, just one other announcement. Just to let you know, Barbara has advised me that she has a very important commitment later today. She's with us for our budget presentation and Q and A, but she is going to have to excuse herself actually for an important school commitment, and I've agreed that it's something that she should do, and she is going to do, but I just want you to know she'll be with us during a period of time, and then she's going to have to leave to keep that commitment to some students, actually, which I think is more than appropriate. And with that, we will now proceed with the business portion of the meeting, and Barbara, your report.
Thank you, President Vitale. I would also like to say that I echo your sentiments about Mr. Sullivan. Although I did not have the longevity that you've had with him, during the time that I've worked with him, he has certainly conducted himself with the highest degree of professionalism. His dedication to the success of our students and the integrity of the adults who service them is apparent in the work that he's done over the past dozen years. We were lucky to have his service, and I join the board in wishing Jim success and the best of luck in his future endeavors. As members of this board know all too well, Chicago Public Schools is faced with an enormous financial challenge. These challenges present a threat to the impressive district-wide academic gains that our students have made in recent years. I know the members of the board share my conviction that our students, families, teachers, and principals have worked very, very hard and have come very far, too far, for us to allow the financial constraints that we have to impede their progress. Therefore, in the face of these daunting financial challenges, it's imperative that we take every possible step to protect classroom funding and to continue to make the essential investments in the success of Chicago's next generation of children. I am confident that the proposed CPS fiscal 2015 budget meets those commitments and upholds our obligation to more than 400,000 students that we serve. This year, we will invest more in our students by increasing the student-based budgeting, core instructional per pupil rate funding by $250 per student. These additional funds will help our schools to sustain and accelerate student growth. Further, the proposed budget makes critical investments in a variety of key areas that drive student achievement, including STEM, IBM programs, social -- did I say IBM? I'm sorry. IB programs, social-emotional learning, dual credit, dual enrollment programs, and our comprehensive arts education plan, as well as the expansion of Safe Passage that protects our students on routes to and from school every day. In order to keep budget cuts away from the classroom this year, we have further streamlined our administrative costs and reduced central office and other operational spending. We have proposed extending the district's revenue recognition period, and while this one-time maneuver allows us to close the 2015 budget gap, it does not address our underlying fiscal challenges. To tackle our structural deficit, we must receive pension reform from Springfield. Pension reform is our best hope to protect the investments we've made in the classrooms and to ensure that we continue to see the gains in our graduation rate and increases in student achievement. It is also critical that pension reform will help us to ensure that teachers have the retirement security on which they can rely. It remains an absolutely critical step in addressing our structural deficit. We must also achieve increases in state funding, as Illinois continues to provide the lowest state funding for education in our nation. I continue to work with all stakeholders, including the policymakers and our legislatures in Springfield, to find real solutions that ensure long-term financial stability for the district and protect resources that support the education of our children. I'd like now to introduce our Chief Financial Officer, Ginger Ostrow, for a more detailed presentation of our FY15 budget proposal to this board. Ginger?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you an overview of the FY15 budget. Although this is my first budget presentation to you, this is the fourth budget that we have prepared in the context of a steep structural deficit. The story remains much the same in fiscal 15 as it was in fiscal 12, 13, and 14. Our revenues, which we have limited control over, continue to decline. Our pension costs, which we have no control over, continue to increase. We have made significant cuts in central office, operations, and administration away from the classroom, while we have redirected our dollars to investments that drive student achievement. But at the end of the day, to achieve long-term financial stability and maintain our investments in kids, we will need pension reform and revenue. Let me share with you more about the overall financial condition and context before I take you into the details of this budget. This pattern of state funding is a challenging one. After years of increase that peaked in fiscal 2010, state funding has declined steadily. We are now trying to run a school district with FY15 expenses and state revenues below FY08 levels. Stated another way, seven years ago, we had more state revenue than we do today in absolute dollars, and a cost structure, pensions included, that can't be sustained at that level. You have seen this chart before. Look at what the pension contribution was for fiscal '08, $218 million, when we had more state revenue than we do today. Look what it will be in fiscal 15, nearly $700 million, of which we will pay $634 million. The only good news in this picture is that this year, the state contributed an extra $50 million to the pension fund, on top of the $12 million that they're required to make state by statute. This is the first time since 2010 that they've made more than the absolute minimum. But looking forward, pension costs continue to increase, and without the state contributing that extra funding, which we very much hope that they will do, the amount we have to pay next year will jump another $70 million and continue to grow into the future. How do these factors play into the budget overall? Let's focus on revenue for just a minute. That's the blue line on the slides and the charts that you're seeing. When state funding started to decline, federal funding in the form of short-term stimulus took its place. ARRA, Ed Jobs, you might recall. They kicked in, and we saw increases in funding in fiscal 11 and 12. When stimulus funding went away and the one-time bump from the change in the property tax timing that occurred in fiscal 12, we've returned to our more typical revenue pattern, somewhere between $4.8 and $4.9 billion per year. At the same time, our expenses have continued to grow, the red line on the chart, with pensions being a significant driver and what's explaining that big jump between 2013 and the escalating costs that you see as we go into the out years. So what we've done to help manage this is cut expenses in central office, operations, and administration so that we can continue to invest in the classroom and increase areas that drive student achievement. We've cut a total of $740 million since fiscal 2011, including additional $55 million of reductions in this next fiscal year, including reductions in positions in central office, reducing vendor costs, achieving savings in facilities, lunchroom, transportation, and other areas, thanks to the tremendous leadership of our department heads who have taken year-over-year reductions in their budgets. This allows us to invest in areas that we know drive student achievement, the pillars that support the next generation, the CEO's five-year action plan for the district. So we've increased per pupil funding this year and added money to school budgets. We've used TIF funding to add arts and PE positions to 171 schools. We've expanded successful IB programs and made other core investments. We invest in supports that help our students focus on learning, including $1 million more for the Safe Passage program, 14 additional social-emotional learning specialists to help our schools and networks in that area, providing support for high school graduates as they transition to college, adding more options programs to reengage students who've dropped out. We continue to provide support for our families and communities with two new parent universities, and supports for our teachers and principals in our schools. And not only does this budget invest in people, programs, and communities, it also invests in our buildings, our physical classrooms, to ensure students have a good learning environment. The capital budget this year includes $510 million of new projects, of which 40% comes from outside funding. That allows us to do more without putting additional pressure on the budget, so it's a very important source of funding for us. The capital plan was originally released as a draft early in May for public comment and review. Since that time is highlighted above in the right-hand section, we've received additional outside funding, including $35 million appropriation from the state and an extra million dollar in grant funding, among other areas. That enables us to expand what we're able to spend in the key areas that the capital budget funds, areas like modernizing labs, adding air conditioning, providing the physical plant and buildings for the new IB and selective enrollment programs, and addressing overcrowding at schools throughout the district. But all this happens in the context of a budget that reflects a significant use of one-time resources, resources made available only by changing the period in which we recognize revenue, as the CEO has highlighted. This slide is just a high-level summary of the FY15 financial picture. Our budget website provides full details on all of the revenues and expenditures that are contained in this budget. Overall, in total, we're budgeting $4.9 billion of revenue that we expect to receive this year. At the same time, we expect to spend $5.7 billion, which is a deficit of $862 million. We're also, again, using the Debt Service Stabilization Fund to help us pay some of our debt service costs, about $54 million. That means in total, we're spending about $916 million of one-time resources, or using $916 million of one-time resources, to balance this budget. There is a bit of good news on this slide. Just last week, we learned that the federal government approved E-rate funding, which supports technology investments in schools. The federal program had been undergoing review and revision, and we didn't expect to receive any money in fiscal 15, and the initial budget we released accounted for that. However, after the announcement, we've been able to add approximately $14 million of additional revenue to this budget, and so you see that the deficit is slightly lower than what we released even just a few weeks ago. But unfortunately, this bit of good news doesn't change the overall financial picture or the long-term view. Even with modest assumptions about spending growth, we will face growing deficits in fiscal 16 and 17 and beyond without pension reform and additional revenue. And so while we present to you a budget that is balanced, it relies significantly on one-time resources to achieve that balance. We know that is not sustainable. For the last four years, we've made significant cuts in spending, reducing central office overhead, cost of operating buildings, transportation systems, and lunchrooms, while we're redirecting money to the classroom, to the programs that drive student achievement, support student needs, engage and empower families, and support our teachers and principals. In short, the pillars of the five-year action plan and the next generation. As the CEO said, CPS students, families, teachers, and principals have worked too hard and come too far to allow financial constraints to impede their progress. This budget allows us to move forward for one more year, but we must find the real solutions that ensure long-term financial stability for the district and protect the resources that support the education of Chicago's next generation. These solutions lie in pension reform and revenue. Thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Ginger. Now I'll ask my fellow board members if they have any questions of Ginger or any other members of the management, including Barbara.
I have a question. Ginger, I know we increased the per pupil rate for students under student-based budgeting, and so there was a net increase in funding, but where that funding landed, you know, net decrease to neighborhood schools, net increase to charters, can you walk us through what drives that and explain that so that we can understand better that this isn't a focus, we're going to underfund our neighborhood schools and overfund our charters?
Thank you. Fiscal year 15 is the second year of our student-based budgeting allocation process. Under that process, we allocate funding for core instruction to all schools based on student enrollment. And so the money follows the students at whatever schools they attend. And so what we've seen in this budget is that schools that had increases in enrollment saw increases in funding. Schools where student enrollment had decreased, that's where decreases in funding would be, and that ensures equity across schools, independent of what type of school they are, and equity for the students in their funding.
And that's regardless of school type?
Yes, that is regardless of school type.
Thank you.
So unfortunately, there are some schools that have lost enrollment, and so with student-based budgeting, the dollars would follow the student wherever that student then would go. Is there any supports we've provided those schools who've seen, in some cases, maybe a precipitous drop that'll be fairly impactful?
We did, and we recognize that that might be a circumstance in fiscal 15. As you might recall, in fiscal 14, we had provided one-year transition funds as schools moved from the old model into the student-based budgeting model. And in a combination of declining enrollment, as well as those one-time funds going away, we anticipated that there might be some schools that would have challenges to meeting their core academic programs. So we established in this budget a process where principals would work with their network chiefs, the Office of Network Support, to identify specific areas that they needed help and assistance in, and could make proposals through that process, and then ultimately directly to the CEO, to provide additional resources. Through this process, a total of about $4.2 million was distributed to schools, including funding, for example, Roosevelt High School was at one of the recent budget hearings, they received an additional $180,000 through this process.
Another question. You know, there's a few organizations, Access Living, Civic Federation, who do a critique of our budget, and I would term it more criticism because it was given to us, I guess, yesterday. Constructive critique would be giving us an opportunity to listen to their comments and perhaps contemplate them. When did you get their report, and have you even had a chance to see it?
We had an opportunity to brief them when we first released the budget and give them an overview of the materials.
Almost a month ago, is that correct?
Approximately a month ago, and had an opportunity to work with them to address some of the specific questions that they raised with us. We actually didn't receive a copy of the report until yesterday afternoon with their final conclusions in it.
Okay. Thank you.
A few comments rather than questions. I mean, picking up from what Jesse just said, some of the criticisms come from different directions. One, the TRIB had an editorial, "Why are we spending more money when we have flatter, declining enrollments?" And the answer to that, of course, is there's inflation in salaries, there's rising pension costs, so that's clear answer to that. But I wanted to make a couple of comments on Ginger's points. One, when she said that the state of Illinois has the lowest in the country contribution to school system, my understanding of that, it's the lowest share of contribution to the total budget, rather than a per capita measurement across states, but it's the lowest share percent. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
The other two points, just really to emphasize what Ginger said, recognizing revenue at a different point in the year is not the creation of new revenues. So nothing has happened with the structural deficit, it's just, again, reemphasizing what she said, so everybody really understands this. You can't keep playing that game. So these are one-time uses, as were some other things that she mentioned. The structural deficit is very compelling, and it leads me to my last point, in that this is a budget, I'm going to vote for this budget, but it's a budget which is balanced by this one-time use of funds, plus it's a budget which could, I won't say likely, but very possibly lead to a downgrading of bonds in the future, which would mean higher costs of financing on the interest rate. So that's very worrisome, I think. I'm not a bond rating agency, I don't know, I can't predict what they'll do, but it's not impossible. When you see this kind of structural deficit, that's what you're going to get. So it's a budget which I would call it a stop-gap budget, and I think the folks who put it together understand it very well. Short of real reform, the crisis only accentuates in the out years.
So, Henry, I just, you know, you raise a point about the revenue recognition. Ginger, I'm going to ask you to, because I think some of the public commentary on this has not been, A, totally accurate, and maybe not fully understood, I think the consequences of what we've done in this budget is, but people keep talking about an extra two months and so forth, but we had a prior revenue recognition period which actually ran till the end of July.
Correct.
And it's been extended to August. So could you just talk about the fact that maybe it isn't two months, and also how it's consistent with what other districts do in terms of revenue recognition?
Yes. So CPS, like most governments, recognizes revenue, in other words, counts in the fiscal year revenue that you anticipate to receive, but receive after the actual end of the fiscal year. Our past policy had been to account for revenue for 30 days after the end of the fiscal year or until July 30th. With the change to August 1st of the date when property taxes come in, it's created enormous volatility for us, because so much money comes in right around July 30th, August 1st. So it makes it very hard to predict when you're budgeting how much revenue is actually going to come in during the course of that fiscal year. And so as part of evaluating this budget, looking at the changes that we needed to make and looking at the fact that most other large school districts, including New York, Los Angeles, I believe, Philadelphia, and most other districts in Cook County, account for revenue for the additional 60-day period, we felt it was prudent to recommend a change to our policy to account for revenues through the end of August, or technically 60 days through August 29th. And all that does is, but again, it doesn't change the amount of money we get, it just changes the period in which we can account for it. And so our pattern of revenue will stay the same, it just helps us in fiscal 15 to present a balanced budget.
Yeah. And just to make that clear again, it's still, ultimately, we only end up getting 12 months of revenue, it's just a question which 12 months you recognize. This year, you end up effectively picking up an additional month, roughly, that goes into our reserves, so that when you actually look at our budget, you can actually see the structural deficit that's uncovered by the reserves that are created because of the additional month of revenue. I think I've got that right. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, and I think you can see that visually in the slide on page five that I presented, where you see the structural deficit, the gap between the revenues in the blue line and the expenditures on the red line just continuing to grow. That's exactly what I believe you're referring to.
I have a question. But Carl's can go, I'll go after Carl's.
I have some questions and comments for clarification purposes. So we have 275 neighborhood schools that increase funding as a result of increased demographics. That's a fact?
Yes.
Okay. Will schools also get a cushion for experienced teachers as they are devising their budgets? Is that still in place?
Yes, it is. It's what we refer to as the teacher salary budget adjustment, and that recognizes that schools that have a more experienced core of teachers need additional resources in order to maintain that teaching pool, or to enable schools to hire more experienced teachers. And so that is calculated, and additional supplemental funds are provided in school budgets if the average cost of their teachers exceeds the district-wide average, so that we do provide a supplement to the schools to be able to do that.
So that process continues?
Yes, it does.
The other question I had, this carryover money from state chapter one, when will the schools be allowed to spend the money, and when will they receive it?
So the state chapter one, or supplemental general state aid, sometimes referred to as SGSA, is money that is a portion of our state funding, the chart that I showed you earlier, that we provide directly to schools based on the number of low-income students. If schools don't spend that money in the course of the year, then we return it to them in the next fiscal year. Past practice had been to release those funds Past practice had been to release those funds after all the accounting had been done and the books were closed sometime in October and November. And last year, the CEO implemented a new policy to say that that's just much too late for schools to receive those funds, it should be much earlier in the year. And so in fact, those funds were released to schools, I believe, just yesterday. So they have received them already and can start planning and budgeting with those dollars.
So that was my concern. If there is a decrease in funding, they would be able to use this money as supplementary programs that they want to maintain. The other thing I wanted to mention, do we have grants, several grants that expired last June 30th that affects also school budgeting?
Yes. Grants typically are for time limited, are typically time limited, and when they expire, obviously, those funds go away, and in some school budgets, you will see decreases because grants expired.
We'll see a decrease because of that.
Yes.
That's beyond our control, because you're talking about other grants that...
Absolutely.
And I had one last question. We mentioned that we picked up some expenses from the school central office, such as janitors. Could you just elaborate on that a little bit? And is there any other expense that we picked up so that, you know, the classroom is not affected as well as the schools?
So I think there's a couple of different things that we've done in this budget. The custodial services, which you referred to, we had previously allocated those funds out and shown them in school budgets. Now, through the new facilities management contract, all of those services are being managed centrally, saving us $17 million, significant savings. But what used to appear in the school budgets no longer appears in the school budget. So if you're just comparing last year's number to this year's number without taking that into account, you might think the school budget was cut. But in fact, it's not, because the services are still being provided. On the flip side, there were a couple of things that we used to actually charge schools for that were no longer requiring them to pay. So another part of the custodial contract is where schools used to have to use some of their funds to pay for janitorial supplies. They no longer have to do that, that will be covered through the central funding. However, the money still remains in the school budget, so that's part of what they would have had to use their student-based budgeting or SBB funds for. Similarly, we used to charge schools a per-computer fee for network support, help desk-type things. We're no longer doing that, we are paying that centrally, but those dollars remain with the schools, freeing up money for the classroom as well.
Thank you.
So I have two questions that are different. One is, Dr. Bird Bennett and I, earlier this week, were at a community, or a meeting with the mayor, and at that meeting, somebody raised a very specific question about a program at Simeon, suggesting that it had been cut as part of this program. It's a program for electricity, training for electrical trades, a CTE program. Can you address, is that something we do in this budget, or is that something driven by the school?
I'd actually like to defer that question to Denise Little.
Forty of the current incoming 361 ninth graders chose electricity as a CTE course of study. However, only 18 would have been enrolled because they also chose other majors ahead of electricity. As such, there was not enough student interest to justify maintaining the electricity program. Of the students currently enrolled in the program, only four or 5% have earned qualifying certifications. The principal, along with the leadership team, held extensive information sessions with students in order to increase interest and participation of the program at Simeon.
So Denise, that decision then was driven by the principal and his team at the school, correct?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
If I might add, board members, it was not, the program was not reduced because of a budget reduction. It was a student interest, student enrollment reduction.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. And now, Ginger, this is a budget question. So just following up on something Henry pointed out around the fact that the revenue recognition doesn't increase the revenue, it just changes the time when we recognize it, does this pose any potential cash flow issues for us at some point? Because the fact is, we're spending more money than we're really getting in the door. And is that an issue that we're going to see sometime next year that we ought to be concerned about?
I think it does pose those challenges for us, and we've been looking very closely what the implications are for cash flow. So we'd like to bring that back to you, but we do think it is a real challenge for us, and particularly in the later months of the fiscal year going forward, something we're watching very closely.
Okay, thank you.
Ginger, or, I know we had public hearings last week on this. You've, you know, for the record, you have, the management has provided us, provided us both summaries and reports on those meetings. Would you or anybody care to give us the essence, at least for the public record here, about what we heard at those public hearings on the budget?
I would add just one other comment as well, that the transcripts, the full transcripts of those hearings are posted on our website, and were posted on Friday after the hearings were held on Wednesday, so folks have an opportunity to review them. I think we continued to hear at the hearings a number of concerns related to student-based budgeting and the implications of funding following enrollment, what, how that would, what the consequences are for individual schools, much as we've discussed today, that that was a significant component of it, and the implications of funding following students and the distribution between charters and district schools was a significant area of conversation. We also heard concerns about the electrical program, which we just spoke about at the hearings. Trying to remember, maybe some other folks who were at, we were at three different hearings. I was at one, so I remember those most clearly. I don't know if somebody else wanted to comment on some of the other, some of the other issues. Concerns about declines in funding overall, and the implications, sustainability of districts' financial circumstances.
Any other questions for Ginger? I want to thank you, Ginger, and the whole staff for the work that has been put into this budget over the past many months. I know that board members individually, over the past several weeks, have spent enormous amount of time pursuing the details of this budget with you and other members of management. And I think I can speak for all of us when I say we do recognize the challenges and the structural deficit that the district faces. It is not an easy decision, as Henry has pointed out, to sort of not necessarily wink, but to look past, at least for one more year, the true fiscal challenges that this district faces. That needs to be stacked up against the interest of our children and their education, which is always a difficult balancing act for us, given the amount of money that we spend per student here in Chicago relative to actually most places in the country. So this is not an easy decision for any of us, but I think we all approach it with the interest of our children in mind. And we appreciate, I think I can say, the decisions that our principals have to take to balance the pluses and minuses within their own budgets after they receive their student-based budgeting and other grant money and so forth. They do not face easy decisions about how to allocate their resources to maximize the benefit for the children in their school. And I would just like to say to them, thank you for your extraordinary work, you principals out there, all 600-plus of you, who have to work through this with your LSC to approve budgets that you think are in the best interest of the children in your community and your school. I think almost all of whom have done that now. And so while there are ups and downs, both programmatically and in individual school budgets, we are approving something that has an enormous amount of collective input across this city, both within the system and outside the system as represented by local school councils. So I thank everybody for the effort that they've put in to bring this document to us today. It's not been an easy task, it's not without its challenges. And, you know, the alternatives would be significant if we were to try to balance this on the back of teachers and kids this year. And for those of you who think that it's easy to do that, increasing class size, laying off thousands of kids, thousands of teachers, is not something that any of us think we should do when there's still an opportunity, we hope, in the course of the next year to really address, or at least marginally address, the significant structural deficit we face. Jesse?
Can I, just piggybacking on something you just alluded to, and it just occurred to me, Ginger, can you give us a small feel about how, you know, we pass a budget here, but really, a lot of the work is done at the local school council and principal level? Can you tell us a little bit about how that process works? And what comes to mind is that there were some students here last month, and one of them mentioned, you know, the school that had books that were in disrepair and ages old, and actually, caracans. We met with those students afterwards, and turns out, that school had plenty of money, and obviously, it was a management choice at the school level not to use the funds on those books. But they had the resources that the district provided the school, that just didn't choose to use them on those books for whatever reason. It wasn't a lack of resources. So can you give us a feel for how that works? How much of it discretionary, if there's a ballpark percentage?
Under the student-based budgeting model that we've implemented, we give all of the core instruction funding to schools on a per-student basis. So that now becomes all flexible funding, subject to the principal, local school council decisions. That's about $2 billion in total that we allocate out to schools that way, out of our total budget. In addition to that funding that we spoke about just a minute ago, was historically referred to as state chapter one, the supplemental general state aid, is about $261 million. That goes out to schools. It's meant to provide supplemental resources for low-income students. It's based on the number of low-income students, and schools and principals, local school councils have discretion on how to use those dollars. Similarly, Title I funding, which is federal supplemental resources for low-income students, also is part of that allocation and choices that local schools can make. And the process that we use is releasing the budgets back, I believe, early in April. We presented the budgets to the schools, and we essentially provide the funding in lump sums. Here's your total aggregate in each of these pots, along with any other grants that we're aware of, that they would be eligible for. And then the principal would put together, with the local school council, their budget and allocate it into the different areas that they plan to spend, tying it together with the Continuous Improvement Work Plan, the CIWP. That then is presented to the network chiefs, who review the budgets, work together, and then ultimately, when it comes back to the budget office, we're simply compiling the work that the schools and the networks have done related to, related to the budgets, and then that's what you'll see presented in the aggregate budget that we shared today.
Got it. So very much a, kind of a bottom-up approach, as opposed to more top-down?
Yes, particularly with the new student-based budgeting.
Just a few comments on what you're seeing. I think some of the confusion also came in last year, and you might have heard people saying they didn't have textbooks, and they weren't boarding the school. Based on my information, there was a holdup on the purchase of textbooks that came from management, and rightly so, because of the Common Core and some things that were taking place. So there were schools that may not have had the new textbooks, because I think that management decided, and I'll say rightly so in my opinion, to vent some of the vendors and the textbooks, and not just let the schools go out willy-nilly buying books before we knew what Common Core was going to look like, and PARC, which is testing. And so I think that it would be much more, and Barbara can step in, release of their ability to purchase this year. But in many cases, and that's something I've advocated for, is that we would not have just people purchasing books across the city that could not be used from school to school if the school was around the corner, especially with Common Core coming up. There needed to be a really deep dive, as Denise always says, into the kinds of material that was being put out that was so-called for Common Core, and was not even related to it. So...
Yeah, Dr. Heinz, that is absolutely correct. Not only did we want to make sure that any text and materials that were ordered were Common Core-aligned, but that they also addressed the needs of our second language learners and our EL students, which they did not, for the most part. So in working with the council, greater city schools, with working with other national consultants, et cetera, we have better understanding now of which books are actually, and which materials are actually aligned to our Common Core state standards.
Again, thank you, Ginger. Appreciate all the hard work and the presentation this morning.
Thank you.
Barbara, do you have anything else that you want to report on?
Yes, President Vitale. Today, we are also proposing that the board adopt an amendment to the principal eligibility policy. The amendment will serve three key purposes. First, it will give the chief executive officer discretion to establish the appropriate wait period between eligibility attempts. So that if someone were to participate in the eligibility process and not successfully complete it, it would allow the CEO to reduce the wait period so that the person could reapply more rapidly. Second, it will clarify the policy on removal or suspension of eligibility status based on performance. And third, it will authorize the CEO to appoint an external principal with a multi-year contract, if they have a track record of successful school leadership, to an interim acting or contract principal assignment at some of our most challenging schools, and matching the process afforded to high-quality internal candidates. These proposed amendments will better position our district to recruit, attract, and place highly qualified principal candidates in our schools.
Thank you. Any questions for Barbara on that?
I do.
Go ahead.
So Barbara, when you mention external candidates, that means that internal and external candidates will have the same requirements?
Yes.
We still have an eligibility process?
Correct.
And the waiting time, it's now going to be decreased or non-existent if you're going to take the eligibility requirements again?
The wait time would be reduced.
Okay. But not with any particular time element? It was just based on your discretion?
No, it would be reduced, I think it was two?
From three to two years.
From three to two years.
Okay, so there is a specific time element here?
Yes, sir.
Now, currently, principals who have had a degree of success, and based on their evaluations, they don't go through this eligibility requirement, right?
They are grandfathered in. These are for new candidates, applicants for principalship in the district.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Carl. Any other questions for her? Barbara, is that complete your report?
Yes, sir, completes my report.
Thank you very much. I'd like to remind everybody that the board does offer office hours, at which you can, in fact, schedule and come down and meet with us for more extended conversations about issues that are, that you think we need to be brought to our attention, and we are pleased to offer this opportunity. All you have to do is call the board office at 773-553-1600, and we hope you take advantage of that. Just for the record, last week, I provided office hours, and unfortunately, from my standpoint, only one person came to see me. And yet, we had set aside a fair amount of time for others to come and talk about issues. I thought this time in particular, people might want to come and talk about the budget, but frankly, nobody showed up. So Madam Secretary, would you please share the details for the next board meeting?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next board meeting will be held on August 27, 2014. Advance registration will open at 8:00 a.m. Monday, August 18, 2014, and will close on Friday, August 22, 2014, at 5:00 p.m., or until all slots are filled, whichever is first. If anyone has any questions about this process, please contact the board office for our assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Stu. We will now proceed with our public participation session. Please, I want to remind everybody that we hope for courteous and civil behavior in this process, and show respect for the speakers who are trying to address us. And with that, I'm pleased to tell you that we have a couple of public officials with us here today, and so I would begin by inviting Alderman Fioretti to address us.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to our chief executive officer, and all the staff and all the board members. Thank you very much. First of all, I do want to, I am going to talk about Manu Fiore, and, but I do want to invite you this Saturday from... to invite you this Saturday, from 10 o'clock on till about noon, to see our registration for our health fair that we have at Montefiore and Simpson. And we have a lot of folks that have contributed time services. It's in conjunction with Rush. Generally, we have about 600 families that show up at the health fair, and they come from all parts of the city. And it's a service that, that I'm more attracted to, to make sure that they have the proper healthcare as they sign up and they come to school, starting, starting very shortly. As I said, I'm here to talk about Montefiore, the last therapeutic day school in CPS. I've been the alderman of the second ward for seven years, and Montefiore is in, in the ward. I've seen some great work done for students at that school. Montefiore has been open since 1929, helping boys with severe behavioral and emotional issues. The students need special services. Outside of the therapeutic environment, these students are at high risk of being suspended repeatedly, getting involved in violence, and disrupting their classes. A school like Montefiore should be on the front line for preventing violence in schools and in our streets. I am here today representing a group of aldermen from the Progressive Caucus who are concerned about the situation at Montefiore. After closing its other two school therapeutic day schools last year and consolidating those students in Montefiore, CPS has failed to assign any new students to Montefiore. After graduation this June, there were very few students left at Montefiore. So CPS laid off most of the teachers in the school. This has been a pattern at Montefiore. There have been several principals there the last few years. I introduced a resolution in the city council in 2009, asking for an investigation of underfunding and failure to assign students to the school. CPS provided damaging testimony at this hearing, and many community leaders, teachers, and principals raised concerns about students who did not receive the necessary IEPs and students who dropped out after serving time in juvenile detention. After these hearings, CPS worked hard to improve the curriculum, teaching, and services at Montefiore under Dr. Richard Smith, the former network chief and head of OSES. There is no excuse. CPS should be, should be able to provide outstanding care at Montefiore. I've given you a letter and supporting material that asks this board to return Montefiore to a working therapeutic school so that it can continue to serve children in Chicago. As a concerned alderman and alderman of the Progressive Caucus, community representatives would like to meet with you and, and help make decisions about Montefiore as soon as possible, so that we can work together and get this school back up and running. I believe it is an important step to stem the violence in our schools and in our streets. Because if we are really serious, as a city, about healing and solving the issues of violence and other problems that plague our communities, how can we turn our backs on schools like Montefiore? We cannot police our way out of this problem. We cannot tax our way out of this problem, and we cannot ignore our way out of this problem and hope that things magically get better. We need action now. We need to get to the root of this and offer help and guidance to our young residents, and especially those that are most in distress and need our help. If we turn our backs on them, what does it say about us as leaders of our community? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. We will, we'll be sure to take this up with Dr. Bird Bennett and, and get back to you and your colleagues on this issue.
We'll meet.
Thank you. Alderman Brookings.
Thank you, President Vitale and Dr. Bird, members of the board. I appreciate being here. I'm here to speak on behalf of Simeon and the electrical program. The electrical program, and I appreciate Ms. Little illuminating us with respect to why the program was cut out, but I think that we need to hear kind of the rest of the story also. I have much respect for Dr. House, and so do the members of the LSC in my community and the great job that he is doing with Simeon. With that said, I believe that this issue is bigger than Dr. House and me and Simeon. This electrical program is the last electrical program in the city of Chicago in the public school system. Our future, and as a lawyer, I would like every kid to go to college and get a post-secondary education. But as one who also believes in choices, I know that that choice is not for everybody. And going forward and looking to see what the direction of good-paying jobs in this city and in this country are, electricity is one of them. There should be no vocational training anywhere where electricity is not a part of it. Each and every one of the vocations that are out there, whether you are in a culinary class or whether you're in the barber shop class, at some point, you're going to come across the need to do something or to plug something in, and electricity is going to be a part of it. The decision to phase this out based on lack of interest, I think, is misplaced. I believe that every child just should be enrolled or should have to take a class that deals with electricity. Just like if there was a vote or if I had a choice when I was in high school, would I have taken calculus? Probably not. Kids should not have that choice. There are certain things that we make people do, and this should be one of them. I also note that there are 56 kids who are still in this program. And so what happens to them and to their major? I've enlisted help, and I have challenged my community. Yes, there is low participation, but I have challenged the Electrical Workers Union in 134. I've challenged also business leaders like Walsh Construction, that we need you partnering with these schools and with these kids. We need you telling the story and getting kids excited about going into this program. I believe that these decisions with respect to vocational training should not necessarily be made at the school level. And I implore you to look at a model where you work with labor unions and also the captains of industry to project what the future need in our society is going to be, and to have vocational programs that reflect that. Electricity is not a whip and a buggy. We still need high voltage and low voltage, and those jobs are going to be around for at least the immediate foreseeable future. And so to eliminate this program seems to be misplaced. If it is an issue of one teacher, then I ask you to do like I did, challenge the school and the community to get more kids involved in this program. And if they don't, I understand the axum, use it or lose it. But I submit to you that once we do advertise this, once people know about this program and are pushed in that direction, that more people will enroll. But more importantly, to the extent that they don't, I would prefer a phase-out as opposed to just stopping it today and telling these other 56 kids, go pick a different major, and, and maybe it'll work out for you. There are two barber shops classes still left at Simeon. And as much as I like to dress nice and be well-groomed, I believe that the projection of an electrician salary is, is far greater than that of a barber. And not to diminish or make light of, of that profession, they are honorable professions, but we need the full gamut in CPS. We need to get these kids ready for the future. And I think that it is misplaced to eliminate this program. So I implore you to overrule this decision, to come up with the funds for this one teacher, and to push it as part of the curriculum for any vocation, that electricity should be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. I would ask Dr. Bird Bennett to have her, from our standpoint, from the board's standpoint, to have, we get briefed on a variety of different things, but we'll ask her for a broad briefing on our career and technical education program as put on our agenda. And in the meantime, I'm sure the career and technical education people who work on this stuff today would be happy to consult with you and work with you on, on the issue of making sure that we have a, a broad array of choices for our children, including programs to become electricians, if in fact, we can create the demand. So I think, Barbara, somebody can reach out to the aldermen who run, the people who run career and technical education.
Thank you.
And talk about the issues.
Thank you so much.
Okay. And, and we'll have them give us a presentation on the broader issue that you've raised about career and technical education in our city and how we're targeting, making sure that we're targeting the ability to develop people for jobs that are available out there. So thanks for coming to us today, Alderman. Okay, I think we can move on. Michael, are you here? Did you want to speak to us today?
Look, I want to actually speak about what's happening with career and technical education also, because I am on a committee, not only with the union, but on a joint committee with Chicago Public Schools. And what we've been finding out is there seems to be a systematic elimination of these career and technical education programs. We need to go big picture on this, because in Chicago here, we have a problem with violence. And I think a lot of that violence, most of that violence, has to do with poverty and joblessness. We need to be considering, what are we doing to align our educational system with economic development? And if we are cutting back these career and technical education programs that are leading to good, well-paying jobs, that we need to rethink that. Now, I need to focus on Simeon, because I want to push back on that and reemphasize that when you cut the program at Simeon, that was the only electrical program that we had left in this city. For the past few years, our students have not been able to go from the vocational education programs into apprenticeships because of the job market being so tight. But now, these apprenticeships are opening up again. There are apprenticeships in the Construction Industry Service Corporation website, you'll see them, for sheet metal workers, pipe fitters, plumbers, carpenters, bricklayers, and there are seven electrician apprenticeships out there. We need to be providing our students with an opportunity for these well-paying jobs. Now, I want to push back on this reason for shutting down this program, because, first of all, I have not been able to get the most up-to-date facts on what is the class load in these CTU programs. I've been requesting it. All I have is 2013. I would like to see 2014, because I question the facts. And I think this board also needs to look at all the facts and the data, because I have seen, we've had community meetings, students have come back and spoke about the impact that the electrical program at Simeon has had on their lives. And these are students that have gone on to complete college, they're engineers, some are electricians, but all of them talk about, oh, my God, when I was in that program, I was drilled over and over on math, math, until I couldn't take it anymore. This is a program that is well within the mission of what Chicago Public Schools wants to be doing. And I'm asking you, and just like Alderman Brookings, I'm imploring you to rethink this decision and bring that program back. But that is only the beginning. We need to look at what's going on with career and technical education. Too many of these programs are being eliminated. Thirteen have been eliminated so far this year. Nine teachers are gone. And this is a time when our economy is opening back up, when these apprenticeships are coming back online, and we are not preparing our students for that. Something is wrong. So I've been working with the career and technical education people at CPS. I want to keep, we need to look down, look at this and drill down into this situation of what's going on at Simeon. And not just Simeon, but the rest of the programs. But I'm asking you, right now, to consider the students, the community, and their parents, and what we need in this city right now to stop this violence. We need good-paying, well-paying jobs. An electrician is a well-paying job. And you cannot build any building or anything around here without an electrician. Where are they going to go now? Where are they going to learn that? I'm asking you to reverse that decision, or at least put it on hold. And we also need to start marketing these things, reaching out to these students, because a lot of them may not be in these programs, because they do not know what they have to offer. And I want to work with, with Chicago Public Schools so that we can make sure that our students know what career and technical education has to offer. And we have far too many students that are going out, going to college, and everybody can't go to college, but the ones that don't finish, the ones that do, are coming out with all of this debt that they have to pay for the rest of their lives. If you go into an apprenticeship, you go right in, and you're making money, and you're making good money. We need to look at that carefully. So I'm asking you to work with me on that one, okay?
Thank you, Michael.
All right. Thank you.